At this time, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled council meeting for the city of Twinsburg for June 23rd. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Yates?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Ceraci?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
We stand for invocation and pledge led by Mr. Scafidi.
Father, you guide and govern everything with order and love. Look upon the assembly of our city's leaders and fill them with the spirit of your wisdom. May we always act in accordance with your will and our decisions be for the peace and well-being of all. Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes of our June 9th meeting? Hearing none, the minutes stand as read. Awards and presentation. Mayor Prokop?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fury. I appreciate that. We do have a couple of presentations this evening, and first of all, I am going to call Roger Green up here from the Hilton Garden Inn. But before I do that, I just want to mention something. When I present the proclamation to Roger, and you will hear about many of the things that he has done and charitable contributions through his corporation and his organization, but one of the things he just said to me is, "I didn't do anything that anybody else wouldn't do," but that's totally not true. Roger Green has always stepped up and gone above and beyond, and we really appreciate it. Roger, come on up here and let's do the proclamation. It's kind of cool because Roger's just said that we kind of started together in 1999. And, come on over here, Rog. And so this is really fitting, that I'm very delighted that we're giving you this proclamation this evening, and I'd like to read that proclamation to you. Whereas, the city of Twinsburg extends sincere thanks and appreciation to Roger Green and his entire team at the Hilton Garden Inn for their support of the city of Twinsburg and the Joshua McTarian Golf Outing. And whereas Roger Green and his staff at the Hilton Garden Inn were a beacon of light during the city's darkest days after the loss of Officer Josh McTarian, Roger and his team provided assistance and showed an outpouring of compassion for the city of Twinsburg and especially Twinsburg Police Department and the McTarian family. And whereas Roger Green has continued his support of the Twinsburg Police Department and the McTarian family with his commitment of support for the Joshua McTarian Golf Outing. Roger and his Hilton team have provided assistance for the past seven years. For the last four years, they have provided lunch at the turn, as well as staff and financial assistance for the steak dinner at the conclusion of the outing. And whereas Roger Green and his Hilton Garden Inn team have assisted in raising over $120,000 for the Joshua T. McTarian Scholarship and the Twinsburg Police Association. And whereas, the team at the Hilton Garden Inn, under the leadership of Roger Green, hosted a charitable fundraiser, Badge 45, in memory of Officer Joshua T. McTarian. This event earned $45,000 in memory of Officer Joshua McTarian. The Hilton Garden Inn also hosts Red Cross Blood Drives and Coats for Kids programs. In conjunction with WTAM 1100, the Coats for Kids program provides winter coats for underprivileged youth in the greater Cleveland area and has earned over $400,000. And that is a really big undertaking. I've attended, well, just last year in particular, and there is so much work that goes into that, but that's never daunting to Roger and his team. They always step up and do anything that they possibly can. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Catherine Prokop, Mayor of the city of Twinsburg, on behalf of the entire Twinsburg community, the Twinsburg Police Association, and we have members of the Twinsburg Police Department here, in particular Brian Donato, who runs the golf outing, so thank you, Brian. The Twinsburg Police Association and the McTarian family extend thanks to Roger Green by recognizing his many contributions to Twinsburg, and we truly mean that, Roger. Thank you so much. And we have another presentation this evening. Just for a little background, thank you again, Roger. Thank you, officers. Just for a little background on this, there is a gentleman who ran a company in our city. His name is Bruce Harris, and he retired a few years ago, and Bruce Harris started an organization called Food2Share. And that organization helps supply food to the Emergency Assistance Center, which is a food service for underprivileged people, people in need. And he has really done amazing things in helping support the Emergency Assistance Center. And the Emergency Assistance Center, under the direction of Joyce Hunt, is Joyce here? I think Joyce is out. But Joyce Hunt runs that center, and they just had a report from the Attorney General's office, and 92% of everything that they collect goes back to their clients. In other words, it's donated back to those people who need it. That is an absolutely incredible amount. You know, so many charitable organizations, that would be reversed. They'd use 92% for overhead and 8% would be going back to people who need it, but this is 92% goes to those in need. So congratulations to Joyce Hunt, her staff at the Emergency Assistance Center, very, very proud of them. I know that Bruce is happy to support that through the Food2Share program. But this evening, we have an extension of the Food2Share program, and there is going to be an event next month in July called Fill a Bag, Feed a Family. So we have the chair people here this evening for that program, because again, another great big undertaking here in the city of Twinsburg. It's going to take lots of work, and we need lots of volunteers. But before we even get to July, we want to make sure that there's enough word out there about this program, and we can do that tonight through recognizing the chair people, who are putting a lot of time and effort into that. So I'd like to call up Sharon Yates, Rebecca Wolf, and Carlos Pinkstaff. These are the chairs of this big program. Come on over, and we'll read a proclamation, and by doing that, we'll help get the word out so that members of our community can support that program next month. We also have Steve Noble in the audience. Hi, Steve, and I know that Steve puts an awful lot of time into Food2Share and this program, too. Great supporter. Thank you, Steve. Whereas, the city of Twinsburg recognizes the very real need of over 300 Twinsburg individuals and households that face a food crisis every day. And whereas, the need to provide food during summer months is particularly difficult when food donations traditionally drop to a lower level. And whereas, Food2Share in cooperation with the following sponsors: the city of Twinsburg, Twinsburg Township and the village of Reminderville, the First Congregational Church of Twinsburg, St. Cosmus and Damian Church, Christ the King Lutheran Church, Good Shepherd Church, Momentum Christian Church, Destiny Church of Twinsburg, Faith United Methodist Church, Real Gospel Missionary Baptist Church, Community Emergency Response Team of Twinsburg, Rotary Club of Twinsburg, Twinsburg Garden Club, Twinsburg Varsity Football Team, Twinsburg Baseball League, Boy Scouts of America, MJG Fitness, thank you, the Emergency Assistance Center, Food2Share Inc., Giant Eagle Twinsburg, and Soul and Market District, Oliver Printing, Graphics by Design, Air Review Reproduction Center, Godine Design, Crystal Clear Building Services, and Shill's Ground Management are teaming up to help end summer food shortages for local families. And whereas, Twinsburg has always been a community that answers the call when assistance is needed, Twinsburg now has the opportunity to not only acknowledge the very real problem of hunger in our area, but to put an end to food shortages and make a difference in the lives of those in need. And whereas, on Saturday, July 25th, volunteers will be collecting donations for the Fill a Bag, Feed a Family food drive, and all residents are encouraged to come together and participate to improve the lives of our neighbors. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Catherine Prokop, Mayor of the city of Twinsburg, do hereby encourage all residents to participate in this very worthwhile program. We also thank those volunteers who provide assistance all year long, addressing the food needs of the members of our community. So good luck with your food drive next month, and we're going to certainly support it and help get the word out, and try to round up those volunteers that you need. Sharon, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And would anybody like to say a few words about the actual event, or do we have a spokesperson here?
Well, I guess I've been asked. They say I have the big mouth, so.
I'm going to turn the mic over to you then. Go right ahead.
All right. The interesting thing is, is this has been tested out in Aurora, and so we sort of call this Fill a Bag, Feed a Family 2.0. In Aurora, we actually came up with over 20,000 pounds of food on the drive. Now, I'm sure that Twinsburg, Reminderville, and Twinsburg Township can do that in spades. So we're counting on the citizens here to pour out their hearts, just as it was there. And we have two fine co-project leaders here that I'm sure will make it run, and they were already doing a terrific job, and we're really proud of them both. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Thank you, Rebecca, Sharon, and I know we have some volunteers in the audience. Colette, Ted Yates, you're in charge of volunteers, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So, big program coming up. Thank you, and again, we hope that everybody gets out and helps support this so that we can fill that pantry up. Thank you very much.
Okay. Shannon, do we have anybody for audience participation this evening?
We do. First, we have Chuck Benacci.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Twinsburg, and other people of authority. My name's Chuck, and I come to you before because there's an ordinance today that I have some concern about, and has to do with sizable amount of acreage that's owned by the people of Twinsburg or the city of Twinsburg, however that stuff works. And turning over a large sizable amount of acreage to developers to build homes while our community is still growing in the needs that residents might want later on. And if we turn over that asset today for maybe a small amount of money to offset another project, maybe we can never have the needs that our community would want. We talk about a bike-friendly community, but the nearest bicycle facility that I find interesting is 40 minutes away in Akron. It's the Akron BMX. It's a little piece of California in middle America. When I was a young kid, there was one in Stowe. Bought my first BMX across the street, next thing I know, they're tearing it down, building a school. The BMX track is now out of striking distance for me. You know, I'm not saying that the city needs a BMX track, but I'm saying if we get rid of all the land, someday, maybe we can't have a BMX track because there's cluster homes. Some things I think the other people might think about. Yeah, I grew up in the 80s. Tony Hawk was larger than life, almost as large as Tony Dorsett in accomplishments. We don't have a skateboard park in this town. We had one for a brief moment in time, it's not there anymore. I drop a friend off, their kid off for skating, I sit outside at a Shaker Heights ice rink, and I watch people do these beautiful tricks on their skateboard at Thornton Park. It's pretty cool to watch. I'm not quite agile enough to participate anymore, but I'm certain there's a lot of little kids that would love to pick up a skateboard, and who knows? Maybe we have the next Ohio hero. There's a young man from Kettering, Ohio, that was on MTV, Rob Diedrick, Robin Big. You might know him, you might not. But he's from Ohio, he has grants, he builds skateboards all over the country, skateboard parks all over the country. I don't know if we've ever applied for one or not, I think it would be pretty cool. You know, when folks were running for mayor, they talked about soccer. Soccer's important to me. I scored the first goal in Twinsburg soccer history. They talk about having a lack of soccer fields and time available for all the kids that are playing soccer. Soccer's a growing sport. If we ever are going to win a World Cup in the U.S., we have to have access to facilities. I'm certain the World Cup coach, Gordon Clinkstale, I think is his name, would love to know that Twinsburg's producing top caliber soccer players, which we are. We have a number that played in college. We maybe have some of them that are on the underage teams. We can't do it without adequate facilities. Things that I might be interested in, real things, disc golf. That's more my speed. You throw a little thing at a thing, and it goes in, you get some points, however it works. The nearest disc golf facility's in Parma? We don't have one in Twinsburg.
Hudson.
Hudson has one? Great. Didn't come up when I said nearest disc golf on the internet. A sport that I do participate in, bocce. We don't have bocce courts in this town. There's a large Italian-American population. Bocce's a very popular sport. It's a throw things at things game. And I drive to the west side to play once a week. It would be awesome to be able to play right in my neighborhood with another team. Community theaters, arts facilities, all kinds of stuff. If we jettison assets to pay for projects that benefit a few, and we lose that asset over time, we don't have assets to serve the community. So just use good stewardship in how you're dealing with stuff. The real reason I came here today is I found it ironic that at the planning commission a couple of meetings ago, they were discussing moving piles of dirt from the parking lot to hoppers, and there were residents concerned about where these hoppers were going to be located. And then the next item on the city's agenda was losing 18 acres of land, where they could have easily hid those hoppers well away from the residents, and it just didn't make sense to me. If I was from Youngstown and a former congressman, I would say, "Beam me up," because it doesn't make sense. The only thing I have in common with that guy is my dad's a truck driver. You guys have a blessed night. Thanks for doing what you do, and it's awesome being able to present to you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
This could be hard to follow, Shannon. Who's next?
Sheila. Sheila Williams.
I'm coming as a community person, and I'm going to come as a citizen, okay? Gene Nixon is officially gone. Donna Scoda took over with Summer County Public Health. We still have not did a tour of the facility, and now Gene is gone. And I want to tell you what he's doing, because it's so interesting. I think I told you, they went to Cuba, they all came back changed. Well, he has taken a position with the Peace Corps, and he's going to Mongolia for three to four years to run their international office there. He's going to have a staff of about 40 or 50 people. He said he's able to walk to his office. He is a true humanitarian. And I said to him at our little cake and ice cream that we had for him last week, "You came back from Cuba changed," and I really thought he was going to forge this partnership with the hospitals to bring these medical students back and forth in research. But he said the Peace Corps thing went back full circle. He started at Peace Corps. So he'll be gone, I guess, sometime this fall. And I asked his wife, was she going to be gone? And she said, "Part of the year." But can you imagine at 50-plus, to have an opportunity like that, to really serve on such a national, global level as he's doing? And so I wanted to bring that information to you all, to have you updated on that, and I hope you get a chance to meet Donna. She ran our last meeting, and she's a good fit, so it should be very, very good. And then Kent State's having, or hosting, Rock the Park on Friday night, and I'm assuming that everyone got some information on it, and we'll probably see each other there as long as it doesn't rain. Now I'm going to switch to the citizen's side. I went to my cobblestone resident meeting, they did not speak highly of you all, Amy, especially you. Is she still here? Yeah. And I told them, I said, "You all are talking about my friends." And they told me, "You all have not been friends to them." I'm going to ask as a resident, some of it, I understand the pushback. Others of it, I'm going to ask you if you take a second look and talk to them. I think they're feeling somewhat displaced, and time is running out with the guaranteed contracts and this sort of thing of the work that's been done up there. So I'm not taking either side, but it's kind of hard at times to hear people talking very despairingly about some people you feel really do care about the city, and others you know that don't. And so if you would take a look at it, a second look, I'd appreciate that, you know, given the opportunity. And if Amy wants to ring my doorbell, she's more than welcome to, because I'll be home to be a buffer, because I think you may need it with Fran Nugent. The second thing I'm going to talk about, and I don't have an opinion one way or another on development. I think anyone who knows me knows that I believe that capitalism is a part of America, it's alive and well, and if I owned 100 acres, I'd do what I want to do with it. My concern was the first reading of the land at 91 in Glenwood that was going to residential from commercial, which allows for development. And I discussed this at my cobblestone meeting, and I only have a couple of questions, and most of them have been answered. I believe it's 19 acres. I want you to listen to what I say, and then correct me if I'm wrong. It's about 19 acres there. It's going to be rezoned from the ballot box. It must pass within the ward and pass by a certain percentage of the city in order for it to become rezoned. The maximum number of pieces of property that can go on it, be it detached or attached, is about 70, 68 to 70. And I see the brown on your face, and I want some clarification on that. And then the last thing, there is no developer at this point for this property. We did buy the snelling property that was there, and we bought, part of that was to be able to widen 91 and our roundabout, but to my knowledge, as a resident, as a taxpayer, there is not a buyer to put anything on this property at this point. We are just positioning ourselves in the event that that would happen. Unlike Whispering Woods, where they own the property, and they're looking to do their expansion with the rezoning. So if I have said any of this wrong, please correct me, because I think I have a knowledge of what should happen and how it should happen. I don't want us to get involved in a behind-the-scenes something taking place, and the residents say, "Oh, we got snooked again." And by me living on that side of the city now, that has become my concern on that side of the city, as if I was on the Whispering Woods side, it would be a totally different situation. So if somebody would correct me if I've said anything wrong, and I only ask that, we continue to be kept abreast. It was a great article on the rezoning in the paper this past week, because I was working on my list to ask my questions when I got here. So that was a good article, and I think things like that, and Larry was very honest with me, talking to me, and I appreciate that. He explained it to me, and I have a running knowledge, but a lot of residents don't. They think that we're just going to rezone something, and then something's on it. There's a whole charter process that has to be followed. And if that could somewhat be addressed, maybe by council president or mayor tonight, to put some people at ease, because my neighbors were not happy.
One minute.
Well, I'm through.
Oh, okay.
You're absolutely right. Of course, it has to go to the ballot, has to pass by a majority vote citywide, and it has to pass by a majority vote in the ward, so that is absolutely correct. If the property should go up, if we decide to divest ourselves of the property, it would go to auction. So that's a public bid, it would be advertised, and again, that would be all transparent. I believe it's about 66 units that can be on that parcel of land. Is that correct, Larry?
No.
Oh, I did think of the sn- no. Okay. Yeah. So about 70.
When is the public hearing for that? We're going to schedule a public hearing for that as well.
It will be scheduled.
Right. So there'll still be a public hearing on that, and the process for rezoning property in the city of Twinsburg is that council does not rezone property. Our charter says that we have to have all zoning changes voted on by the people, and in addition to that, there is a ward veto. So that property's in Ward 4. If everybody in the city said, "Yes, that's fine," and a majority of Ward 4 residents said, "No," even if the popular vote was higher, the ward veto would stop that change. There's really nothing that an outside entity can do with public use or planned use development to a certain extent. And, you know, so that's the reason that they plan a commission in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, approved and put that forward, so. But the process is that this would be on the ballot in the fall. There's nothing, there's no buyer that I'm aware of, there's no auction plans. It's just following the same process that's been going on. This has been in discussion probably a few years. Just started the readings. We're not going to pass anything this evening. We're on the second reading of a three-reading ordinance. If that passes to put it on the ballot, there'll be a resolution later to work on the ballot language specifically, but that's our process, I mean, we do. Okay.
You recapped it very well.
And I'm also aware of some of the concerns that some of your neighbors have regarding drainage up there. I mean, that's gone on for a while. I've been up there multiple times to look at it, and I know that, in fact, Amy and I just talked about this within the last week. There was some defective concrete that's been tested, and they're in the process of scheduling the retrofit. It's going to be, sections are going to be redone. Is that correct, Amy? So I don't have a date on that. In fact, I just corresponded with one of your neighbors yesterday to say. I don't have the date, but this is where we're at, so. Try to be as nice as possible.
Well, I, there's a couple neighbors in there, one in particular, we've probably met with her about 20 times. Sure. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the list?
There is none.
All right. Okay, next we'll go with council communications. Mrs. Stoffer, would you start this evening?
Sure. I was going to report on the June 4th ARB meeting. I don't believe, you did not attend that for me. Okay. All right, great. I had a couple of, yes, yes. There were a couple of cases here. One was at 2496 East Aurora Road, and it was an internally illuminated wall sign, Rita's Cafe. It was tabled at that time. There was also a Raceway. Let's see, some letters are, there was also another sign submitted. Raceway Channel letters, internally eliminated, they wanted it open 24 hours, so that was approved. Car wash, 24 hours, that was approved. And then there was, there were a few that were tabled, Rita's Cafe, and another demolition of 9137 on Darrow Road by John Fairnachy. There was another meeting. I will have to give a full report on that on June 18th. I will have to give a report on that at our next council meeting. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Ceraci?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. First, the finance committee met earlier this evening, and our finance director, Karen House, presented us with some information on some possible upcoming changes that we will consider policy-wise regarding our financial situation in order to build up some reserves in our key budget areas, areas that we need to have reserve monies put for payments that we have to make every year and that we can't avoid. And she went into some detail describing what will be coming, and it was basically an introduction to it. We'll be having some working materials coming forward, and we'll look at some possible options that we have along those lines for setting budget restrictions in the future. We did talk about making it a policy rather than an ordinance, so that if we needed to have a variation from that, that we could without going back to legislation. Also, the Twins Day Committee met last Wednesday, and everything's coming along very well. The registrations are starting to come in for the festival itself, as well as the golf outing, and things are picking up. This is a real busy time of the year, and beginning in July, we'll meet every Wednesday up until the festival day to make sure we get everything done correctly. The safety committee met yesterday, and we discussed the plan that we had been working on the last several months, a pedestrian safety program to build some additional sidewalks on some of our main roads, and we will be going forward. In fact, we have some legislation tonight to seek a grant to get started on that project and see if we can get some sidewalks on some major roads. It's a definite safety concern for our residents, and so we addressed that yesterday, and again, we'll be addressing it tonight in our legislation. And the Charter Review Oversight Committee is my last committee, and that will be meeting next month, July 29th. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roden?
Thank you. Just an update with Environmental Commission. We had another successful free shredding event on June 13th. It was from 9:00 AM to noon, and we shredded 6,800 pounds of paper, which was 2,300 pounds more than last year. So thank you to Chris Campbell and the Service Department for assisting in the event. And then also just to mention the Simple Recycling Program, which was a collection of textiles that was, that started this morning. So I know there's a few people that, I mean, everyone got their bags, but I don't know if we saw a lot of participation, so that program is starting. So if you have any questions, call City, and/or I know that they came, and you can contact them as well to get more information about putting that bag out, which is to put in your textile goods. of your textile goods out there. Mr. Ceraci talked about safety and Mr. Yates is going to talk about the community relations. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. On June fifteenth, the planning commission met. They had two things on the agenda. One was storage bins for the Glen Eagles Golf Course. This is for like sand and pure dirt so that they can do the maintenance. Sometimes it's been in our parking lots, sometimes it's been over behind the driving range. Now we're looking for a secluded place that it's going to be in bins so that it doesn't get contaminated and in bin walls similar that you'd see at a landscaping facility. They're known to be any higher than eight feet and they'll be landscaping around them to help hide them further. And that passed. As well as there was a approval for a final plat for the Boulder Brook, which is the adjacent to McTerran Parkway. And that, I think there's twenty-three houses there on a long cul-de-sac and I believe, and that passed five-zero. And there's not a currently scheduled planning commission meeting at this time. The CIC met on June eighteenth and appointed Matt Sler who's in the audience tonight to that board. Going to review some proposals for purchase agreements and the next meeting will be on July fifteenth at seven-thirty. Again, minutes and information regarding the CIC is on their website, twinsburgcic.com. The compensation committee will meet July seventh at City Hall at six-thirty. And I attended the Twinsburg Chamber meeting that was on June tenth where I gave an update to the other members of the Chamber of Commerce, information on regards to what's going on in City Council and the city of Twinsburg. The next meeting that they'll have for their board, it'll be at the library at eight o'clock on July eighth. I was able to attend the Chamber of Commerce golf outing a week and a half ago with Coach John Gudinski. Brian Steele is in the audience tonight and Mr. Ceraci, and we did quite well. Little bit of rain, actually a lot of rain, but the course held really well. But it was the first time I'd been to the course since we've opened the practice facility. You know, we've talked about this for years and that we had a very limited amount of grass to hit off of and other communities adjacent to us have expanded their practice areas and we went down from about seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars in practice fees. I mean, alls we have to do is guy buys a bucket, no waiting, hits them. It's the easiest money we get on that golf course, down to about twenty. So we've expanded that facility and it's beautiful and there's enough grass that we can hit off forever, as well as the putting green that used to be at about a ninety-degree angle. Should've had a windmill on it with a clown, is now large and flat and there were thirty people putting on it without being on each other's way. So it literally looks great and if you haven't been out to hit a bucket of balls at Glen Eagles in a while, you should do it because it's a beautiful place and it's open for This Thursday, June twenty-fifth, there'll be a community forum hosted by Gary Ceraci and myself. It's like a ward meeting for outside people, at-large councilman. The doors will open at six. The meeting will start at six-thirty. We have Chief Noga, Chief Morgan, so police and fire. Amy's going to speak as well as Mr. Finch. So some of the questions that were addressed tonight, we can reemphasize those at that meeting. So if you're available, we look forward to meeting you. I also saw that there was a motion for us to deal with the Best Stop location in regards to not, to allowing them to submit for a, to continue their liquor license. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that City Council does not oppose the renewal of the liquor permit for Acal LLC, known as Best Stop, located on Ravenna Road, and authorize the clerk to submit the form to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Can I have a second? Mr. McDermott's second. Is there any discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scofidi?
Yes.
Okay. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you very much. Mr. McDermott?
Well, I too have attended the finance committee meeting and I found that Gary and Bill did a very good job of explaining what the problems are and what the changes could be and what to happen next.
All right, Mr. Yates?
Yes, thank you. I attended the community relations board meeting on July eighteenth and was attended by all parties involved. So we had the Chamber of the Township, the schools, Reminderville, and the library there. I'm just going to go to some brief highlights. The Chamber, I guess the golf outing was a big success. It was sold out. First time I haven't been able to play it in a long time. I was on vacation, but here it was a great event and a great turnout. Taste of Twinsburg, which I did attend this weekend. If you didn't have a chance to attend it, it was a very well-organized, very well-run event. The vendors did a fantastic job. We had more food vendors. They pretty much served food the whole time. I was there for, from two to eight and there was a steady flow of traffic for the whole event. And a lot of people came up to me and really complimented that these are the kind of functions that, you know, we can, we have the capability of doing, we should be doing in the center of town and those even from out of town really came and enjoyed it, so. Great job there. Also with the Chamber, there is a networking event for the women's group on July thirtieth and then August nineteenth, they have their three-chamber luncheon. As for the schools, a couple of things going on at the school. They're doing a parking lot resurfacing at Chamberlain, so that's going to be going on. And then if you haven't noticed, the replacement of the turf on the field, I guess it's now complete and looks fantastic. Everyone's anxious to see all the sports get out there and participate on it. They're looking at doing a bus lot replacement also. And then Reminderville has a family fun day coming up in the old village. And then July third, there's a movie night at City Hall. And then there, if you've noticed, they fenced off the area around that portion of the Drug Mart Plaza and they're going to be demolishing that section that's going to be moving forward with the fitness center for Reminderville. Township talked about a couple of just road construction progress, programs are going on, redoing Marwell as well as an area in the Heights. They discussed that. And then the library was basically they're redoing, renovation of the original, they called it the original nineteen ninety-three portion of the library. So there's another renovation project going on at our library. That's it for community relations. I also attended the CIC meeting on June eighteenth. That was at morning. You know, it's an open meeting. Encourage residents to attend. Didn't have any, anyone in the audience, so I would encourage you and to attend those Here tonight, we had a presentation on the Fill a Bag, Feed a Family event that's going to be going on. And Bruce Harris, along with a lot of other members are, and this is a completely volunteer event, so when they mentioned ninety-two percent, that's for the emergency assistance center and the whole. This, this project, which happened in Aurora, is actually a hundred percent. So everything that's collected goes back to the center to be able to hand out in food. I am organizing volunteers for it. I need about two hundred volunteers. So if you have groups of people at work or anywhere, if you just want to put together groups to help on their days, this Sunday, we'll be putting together approximately nine to ten thousand bags to hang on doors in the township, the city, as well as Reminderville. And then on July twentieth, we'll be distributing those bags starting around six o'clock. So I need a lot of volunteers to be able to go out and hit the neighborhoods to do that. And then on July twenty-fifth, starting at ten o'clock, we'll be going out and collecting the food. And then there's a business in Twinsburg that has donated warehouse space for about three months to be able to bring the food in, sort it, organize it. And it's quite, we need probably a hundred and twenty people that day because every single piece of food has to be inspected for expiration dates, has to be sorted. So, I mean, this is, you know, most food banks, I'm involved with another one in Ravenna, most food banks are, a lot of times they would operate without any kind, with having to purchase food. This center in Northfield, which services a lot of Twinsburg residents, you may not realize that, but finds itself in a position where it's having to purchase food quite often. And so this is really going to be a, you know, a help to this organization to continue to service Twinsburg and the surrounding areas and those in need. You know, we don't, we think about our residents, we don't think about those that are struggling to provide meals, but this same organization is also the one that does the backpack program for our schools. So these are kids that are on subsidized lunches that, you know, rely on those, that maybe is their only meal during the day and then on the weekends, they're able to send them home with a backpack. So this is the same organization that is able to help them. So I encourage anyone that wants to get involved, just contact me. I'll find a place for you to help make this a success, so. See, I wasn't here the last meeting, so I didn't get a chance to talk about the duathlon. I participated in, was a great event again. I'm just, I love that this town has a multi-sport event, so hopefully next year we can increase the participation. I did have a challenge out in terms of me racing it and I made my donation today for those that beat me, so. Let's see. And then Rock the Park, this Friday is our second concert. It's Desert Highways and Eagles Tribute Band and I encourage everyone to come out. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Scofidi?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Good evening. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on June seventeenth. There was appeal number four and appeal number five. Both of those apply to a Ravenna Road church. The first, number four, appeal was a variance from the zoning and development regulations, which state that no legal, non-conforming sign shall be modified or changed. What they're proposing is a face change to their sign as well as new collars. The sign company was there representing the church as well as some residents in the area that live around the church and they all came up and gave their presentation. Upon hearing all the presentations, the board voted five-zero and they turned down that appeal. Also, appeal number five was a, for the same sign, same church, but a variance on the setback, a five-and-a-half-foot variance to a ten-foot setback. And again, the board heard all the comments from those in attendance and they, it failed five to zero again. So neither of those were passed. After some other discussion at the meeting, then the meeting was adjourned. There was no other business. Twinsburg, Taste of Twinsburg. I attended that as well on Saturday, like Ted did, and I know some other council people were there, as well as a ton of residents and non-residents. They had a great turnout, there was great food and, you know, my hat's off to all those that had anything to do with putting that together this year and it was another great success. And year two was nice and I hope that year three's just as well. The weather held out. That was a little iffy, I think. It started out to be a little frightening, but it was a great day and a great time had by all. Shred Day, I attended shred day in the morning and also had a chance to get rid of some of my documents that I wanted shredded. And first thing in the morning, there was a line going down the driveway at the service department and it seemed to continue. I got out and I was talking to some of the staff there and to Daisy was there and so again, congratulations, Chris, to your staff for all that they did. Daisy, you were there and, you know, whenever there's an environmental project going on in town that's successful, Daisy's usually around to be a part of that program and she was there that day. And so it turned out very nice and thank you. And I know a lot of people appreciated that, too. One question I have is, looking around the city and as far as beautification, we're doing our roads, we do our gardens, we do our landscape, but our fire hydrants are starting to look a little shabby. And I've had some residents mention that. I happen to be on the board, the homeowners board of Glenwood Preserve and I know the board members there are looking at the fire hydrants there. And I'm not, Chris, is that service department or fire department here that does those? Or mayor? Service department? Are we going to have a program on that or did we start anything with that this year?
What we're doing now is we paint all apartments.
Okay.
We get about two years.
Okay. Well, I know in the preserve as well as other areas in Ward One, you know, they're really, they need to be painted again. And I know that the homeowners association, I don't know about anybody else and I don't know if this would be a program that we could do or any other association would be willing to do, but the board of Glenwood Preserve would be willing to go ahead and either volunteer to paint those within the preserve or hire somebody to paint them if the city would provide them with the paint. So that's something you might want to consider. I know that that's a big task because I'm sure there's a ton of fire hydrants here in the city of Twinsburg. So I know it's a big task and it's a lot to do. And a lot of times that's not the priority because there's many, many other projects that we have going that take more precedence over that. But if that's something that you would want to consider or mayor you would want to consider or talk about it at your next staff meeting, I know the board there in the preserve has offered that up and I don't know, again, if any other board would be willing to do that, but we'd be willing to do our share to help out as well. So, that being said, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pocock?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Good evening, everybody. You know, we were talking a lot this evening about Fill a Bag, Feed a Family, and really that's going to be a tremendous program next month. But I did fail to mention a very, very busy lady, Shannon Collins, who is also very involved in that program. And when I say busy lady, I really mean it because she is one of the head people on the Cost of Freedom tribute that's coming to Twinsburg here over the Fourth of July weekend. And the amount of work that she and Adelle Nikaz and Sandy Panzik and Mark Kowalski and Angel Keefe have put into this is just, it's absolutely incredible, working with the VFW and the other volunteers. So I know that's going to be a great, great program. You can talk a little bit about that later, Shannon. I'm sure you want to get some PR out on it. But thank you, Shannon, because I don't know where you found the time to do Cost of Freedom and also Fill a Bag, Feed a Family, so thank you very much. You talked about Taste of Twinsburg and I, it was, it was really, really a fun event. The sun came out and the day was wonderful, the food was great, but I want to thank the people who were involved in that. And I know this doesn't mention everybody because there were so many volunteers, but the head people, Adam Hoon and his wife Christie, and of course, Rick and Jen Charlton. Jen is the one who brought the idea to Twinsburg last year and headed it up last year and this year they handed it off to Adam Hoon and Ken Riley. So thank you. And Sue, who did the Kids Zone, thank you to all of you. You did a wonderful, wonderful job. It was, it was a great event that all of the residents that were there said, you know, "Let's do this again." So that's always good to hear. We have gotten the Cleveland Water Department finally out and they have done a lot of work on our hydrants. One of the things is restoration of the work that they did at lots of different locations here in the city of Twinsburg. So I was very gratified last week to find out that they were out working and getting some of that work done with the hydrants. But so were our residents. And I'm not going to read the whole letter, but we got a letter from a resident on Bell Meadow and he said, "I would appreciate it if you would forward my thanks to the members of your building department and the water department for all the efforts that they made for helping me in resolving problems with Cleveland Water to fix broken pipes in front of my house this week." Dan in the building department coordinated the effort and worked with John Adams and his two men, who used the C-Camera system to find the problem in the first place and later monitored the work of Cleveland Water to make sure everything was done properly. And so he sent us a really nice letter thanking our departments and some of our employees. So thank you to him for sending that to us and we'll make sure that they find, get that information. Also, we've been talking about the simple recycle program and Seth is right, started today. One of the things that a lot of residents that don't know is that this program, we will be recycling textiles and a hundred percent of textiles are recyclable. Unfortunately, eighty-five percent of it never gets recycled. So this is going to be a really good program for our residents. You can put in bedding and clothing and shoes and any kind of textiles, put it in the green bag, put it out with your trash on trash day. It will go, be picked up by a separate truck and it will be totally recycled. Very, very pleased about that. I know a lot of people, I know myself, I'll have bags that I intend to get to Goodwill and I carry them around in the trunk of my car and somehow never get them there. So put them in a bag and they will be picked up and they will go to good use. They will be taken over to be reused by secondhand stores. Some of it will go overseas and then the rest of it will be recycled. So, great program. And other than that, I think it's time to turn it over to Karen House, our finance director.
Good evening, everyone. I want to make sure I'm speaking clearly. I had a resident who was kind enough to let me know that she had a hard time hearing me to make sure I speak into the microphone, so I want to make sure I'm very clear. Just to let you know that the auditors will be coming to begin the audit on July ninth and tenth and so I'm happy. 10th, and so I'm happy about that. And also, we have received our June collection of income tax. The city income tax for June is $1,610,984.67 compared to last year receipts of $1,276.40. This reflects an increase of 26.25%, or $334,943 compared to last year. Refunds and adjustments in the amount of $85,802 are also reflective in the June collection. Total year-to-date receipts collected, it's $10,362,509 compared to last year, $13,463,840. This unfortunately reflects a decrease of 23%, or $3,101,331 less compared to last year. The net distribution applied due to the quarter percent reduction is $201,135. Also, I indicated that we did have some pending refunds that could potentially be about $2.5 million to $3 million. Right now, it looks like one of them is exceeding the statute of limitations, and so therefore that one was the largest refund that I've discussed over prior years. And there's another one that is under audit review that's still pending, so I will keep you updated as it relates to those refunds. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Karen. Chris Campbell? No report tonight? Okay, Larry Finch?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just a few items tonight. TRM, a company from the United Kingdom that we made contact with at the Invest USA Summit last March, visited us last month, and they'll be coming back again on July 22nd. They're going to review a couple of potential sites for a U.S. operation. We are, you know, we're really, obviously, very happy they're coming back for the second time, and we're very encouraged with their interest in a specific property in the city of Twinsburg. National Enterprise Systems, Inc. is still looking at Twinsburg as one of the potential locations for their expansion and relocation. They're on the agenda tonight for a Twinsburg occupancy program grant agreement, and the company will, if they come to Twinsburg, they'll bring a $3.4 million payroll and be signing a 10-year lease. The top offer would provide a 50% top grant for a five-year period, and that would be a $34,000 approximate amount for five years, and the company will be paying $68,000 plus in income tax. Good news for the city generally, I think, for the first time in my memory, and I go back a little ways. The rate of vacancy in industrial properties here in Twinsburg has dropped below 3%. That's almost unheard of. You'll see a number of four lease signs out still, but those four lease signs are, they're advertising 5,000 square feet in a 30,000-square-foot building, or 1,200 square feet in a flex office space, or something like that. But we are at, in the very, it's both advantageous, and it says good things about the city in terms of the desirability of it as a location for industrial use, but it's also kind of a problem in that we have difficulty generating more interest in the city of Twinsburg and attracting people, because we don't have vacant space to move them into. So obviously Chrysler's, the former Chrysler site is Cornerstone Business Park, is going to play a very important role here in the next couple of years. The Summit County Job Preservation Agreement, to which the city is a signatory, is anticipated to be modified. The county, based on a request by one of the member communities, will put a limit of income tax-related incentives into the current agreement. The proposed modification will restrict income tax incentives to be based only on the increase in wages paid. So if a business, like, for instance, National Enterprise Systems, is moving from one location in Summit County to another location in Summit County, you would not be able to offer an incentive on the $3.4 million payroll that they already have. You'd only be able to offer the incentive on the $260,000 payroll that they anticipate growing over the next three years. So that will significantly change, I think, the incentive game for relocations within Summit County. It hasn't affected us yet, won't affect us with National Enterprise Systems, because they're coming from outside Summit County. I'll keep you posted on the status of that. If we were, we got into some kind of an agreement that was in violation of this clause, the way that the county will enforce this is by taking points away from your local project funding through county-administered programs, like the Ohio Public Works Program, the LTIP and the Skip Program that we use frequently for roadway projects. There are four items of legislation on the agenda tonight. Deal with rezonings. 77, 2015, rezones 10 acres at the northwest corner of State Route 82 and Chamberlain Road from C2 to R5. 79, 2015, rezones 19 acres owned by the city of Twinsburg from PUD and PF to R5 at the northeast corner of Glenwood and Darrell. Ordinance 80, 2015, rezones one acre, or sends to the ballot, one acre from C1 to R5. This is the city-owned property at the corner of Glenwood and Darrell Road, where the dentist office is currently located. And Ordinance 83, 2015, which authorizes the mayor to enter into the top agreement with National Enterprise Systems, Inc. at 2479 Edison Boulevard for the top agreement, effective for five years. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Finch.
Thank you, Larry. Colette Blaznik, HR.
Good evening, everybody. From the HR Department, since June 1st, we have 11 new hires. Nine of them are just seasonal employees, lifeguards, and working at the golf course and that. We have also one part-time person at the Twinsburg Fitness Center, and one temporary building inspector who has been hired to count the plumbing fixtures at our businesses in town. This is something that has not been done in many years, and some businesses have grown and expanded. Our sewer bills are based in part on the number of plumbing fixtures in the facilities, so the city has an interest in verifying that the number that we have on file is actually the correct number. So we have hired that person to go around and do that. She'll be working for a few months. In addition, to our apothecan candidate that we hired in the Police Department, Joe Burdette, who is currently attending the academy, we have two additional officers. Michael Vistos started working last week, and Nicholas Duncan will be starting next week. We would like to get them sworn in publicly at the council meeting on July 14th. At that meeting, we're also hoping to swear in a new firefighter, who is in the hiring processes and is scheduled to start work on July 13th. The new firefighter is replacing Lynn Racine, who is retiring after 29 years, with our Fire Department. Switching gears a little bit, we recently subscribed to an applicant tracking system that will help us with our job postings. It's going to make it a lot easier to receive the applications, track the applicants, generate compliance reports. That should be up and running for a few weeks. That's going to, for instance, replace our current sort of homegrown system where we have to, currently, we have to go online, we have to download the application and the resume, save it as a PDF, and then put it on a public drive where it's accessible to certain managers who are in those hiring processes. So this is going to ease things up a lot more. In civil service, I attended the meeting on June 11th, and the next civil service meeting is July 16th, which is actually the third Thursday in July. We normally have them on the second Thursday, but due to vacations, that's going to be on the 16th. In the IT department, the new camera system will be installed in the council chambers over the break. Mark is in the process of adding three years of council agendas and minutes to our website. And just as a note of interest, the IT staff responded to 75 help desk requests so far this month, and even that, some of the help desk items are small, and some are quite large, and lead to several days of maybe researching what parts we need, and getting back and fixing things and doing things. But in addition to the actual documented help desk requests, that we encourage everybody to submit those through the help desk, through the email system that we have set up, you know, Don and Mark obviously get a lot of phone calls, and a lot of just, you know, in the hallway, somebody saying, "Hey, my printer's not working, come on over here and fix this." So they're very busy over there. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have this evening. Thank you.
All right, next we'll move on to legislation. Before we begin, I'd like to make a motion that we add Resolution 91, 2015 to our agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese seconds. This is a resolution to apply for a grant that came to us late today, and requires a motion to be able to address it this evening. Are there any other comments? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 91, 2015 is added to this evening's agenda. Ordinance 70, 2015?
An ordinance amending salaries, wages, and employment descriptions for certain employees of the city, and updating classifications of employees to be known as the 2015 Salary Ordinance.
I make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 70, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese seconds. This sets the pay for city council in upcoming elections. It doesn't affect anything until you win an election by the residents. Are there any other comments? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
No.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
No.
Pass is five-two. Ordinance 72, 2015?
72 or 73?
Oh, 73, I apologize.
73. An ordinance amending Section 147, employees generally of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg.
That stands on its second reading, excuse me. I make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 73, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scafidi seconds. Discussion. This is upgrading the employee general codified ordinances. It's been recommended by the HR Director, it's been reviewed by council, and this is its third reading. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 83, 2015 passes seven-zero. Ordinance 74, 2015?
An ordinance adopting the tax budget of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2016, and submitting the same to the county auditor.
That's its second, that will be its second reading, and we're going to pass over Ordinance 76, 2015 until we do a little bit more research on it. That moves us to Ordinance 77, 2015.
An ordinance rezoning certain property, parcel number 64-08625, in Twinsburg, Ohio, owned by Whispering Woods Twinsburg LLC, from C2 commercial use to R5 single-family cluster district use.
Tonight was its second reading. On our agendas, we have Ordinance 78, but that's going to be removed, because that was pulled off by the applicant. So we'll go to Ordinance 79, 2015.
An ordinance rezoning certain property, parcel number 64-05379, in Twinsburg, Ohio, owned by the city of Twinsburg, from PUD and public facilities to R5 single-family cluster district use.
Okay. That'll be its second reading tonight. Ordinance 80, 2015?
An ordinance rezoning certain property, parcel number 64-08056, in Twinsburg, Ohio, owned by the city of Twinsburg, from C1 commercial use to R5 single-family cluster district use.
Okay. That will be its second reading. Ordinance 82, 2015?
That one you guys voted on last meeting, so that's a typo.
82, 2015?
That was for the IT appropriations?
Oh, that's right.
I apologize. That was my fault, leaving that one on.
Which one is that?
82.
No, I thought that was the salvage, the account. I thought we still needed to do that. No? Didn't we discuss that in the early meeting? All right, no, I'm sure that got 85. Not a problem. Resolution 83, 2015?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with National Enterprise Systems, Inc., to provide tax incentives under the terms and conditions of the Twinsburg occupancy program.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 83, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden seconds. Mr. Finch, in his report, discussed National Machine. This would be part of our, this would put it in line with a top program, our occupancy program. In this, if we were to get this company, it would bring in $3.4 million in new income, relocating from Solon, and there are many other communities working with this company. So hopefully, this will help us capture this account, or this company for Twinsburg. Are there any other comments? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 83, 2015 passes seven-zero. Ordinance 84, 2015?
An ordinance accepting the bid of Jackson Comfort Systems, Incorporated, for the HVAC system municipal buildings for 2015, and declaring an emergency.
I make a motion that we put Ordinance 84, 2015 on its third and final reading and declared an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates seconds the emergency. Discussion on the emergency. So this is a contract for four air conditioners that get put on the roofs of buildings outside, and we want air conditioning in the summer, so we're not going to wait 30 days to do that. So we want to do this as quickly as possible, and if it passes on emergency, we can act on this tomorrow. Is there any other discussion? Would you call the roll on the emergency, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'd like to adopt, as an emergency, Ordinance 84, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese seconds. Discussion. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 84, 2015 passes seven-zero as an emergency. Ordinance 85, 2015?
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the special revenue account as established in Ordinance 24, 2015, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2015, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I move that we place Ordinance 85, 2015 on its third and final reading and declared an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer seconds the emergency. Discussion on the emergency? This establishes an account so that we can finish the transaction to purchase the dentist's office on the corner of Glenwood and 91, and we want an emergency to show that the accounting can be done as quickly as possible. This establishes an account so that we can finish the transaction to purchase the dentist's office on the corner of Glenwood and ninety-one, and we want an emergency to show that the accounting can be done as quickly as possible. Shannon, would you call the roll, please, on the emergency?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to adopt as an emergency ordinance eighty-five, two thousand and fifteen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scafidi seconds. Any discussion on the ordinance? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance eighty-five, two thousand and fifteen passes seven-zero as an emergency. Resolution eighty-six, two thousand and fifteen?
A resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required for the Crestwood Drive water line improvements.
I move we adopt resolution eighty-six, two thousand and fifteen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scafidi seconds. Discussion?
I just have a comment. We have been going through Glenwood Acres the last probably five, six years, trying to do a street every year to replace the transite pipe, and in the meantime, we've been doing that. We've been replacing some sewer and also resurfacing the roads. So, we're getting down to the wire now. Once we, we get this, this funding in place and we get Crestwood Drive done, we'll have approximately three more streets to do in the acres, and we will have been through the entire Glenwood Acre area. So, I just want to say that I'm, you know, I'm proud of that. It's been, it's been a long time coming, and we've waited year after year. I believe in all the years that we've been going through the acres, there was one year that we missed that we weren't able to, or we didn't get the funding for one of the streets, but we, I thank council too, that does happen to be in Ward one, and we've all been very diligent in that and seeing to, seeing the projects there through to the end. So, I, I'm just appreciative of that and hope this passes tonight.
So in our discussions earlier, we think we've got eighty percent of the transite pipe out of Twinsburg. This would be a proposal, a total project of one point one four one million. We're looking to get a thirty-year, zero-interest loan, the amount of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Are there any other comments? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution eighty-six, two thousand and fifteen passes seven-zero. Resolution eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for federal congestion mitigation air quality program funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study to improve portions of Dara Road from Ravenna Road to Tinkers Creek and declaring an emergency.
I move we adopt resolution eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen, is there a second?
I'll second.
I move, excuse me, Mr. Yates, I made a mistake, I didn't read the second part. I need to move that we adopt resolution eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen as an emergency.
I'll second that also.
Mr. Yates seconds the emergency. All right. So, discussion. All right. This is a federal congestive mitigation and quality program, or, in other words, we're going to, this is, this helps us build trails and bike paths and move people around, or, or study how to move people around in, in certain areas. This is an eighty-twenty grant, and this is an application to do so. Are there any other comments? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
The resolution eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen passes seven-zero as an emergency, and we needed the emergency so that the engineering department can file the paperwork. Resolution eighty-eight, two thousand and fifteen?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for federal congestion mitigation air quality program funds programmed by Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study to improve portions of Dara Road with intersections and traffic signal upgrades and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Make a motion that we adopt resolution eighty-eight, two thousand and fifteen as an emergency.
I'll second.
Mr. Yates seconds. Discussion. Okay. This is the eighty-twenty federal grant application for, again, for Dara Road intersection and upgrades. Any other discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution eighty-eight, two thousand and fifteen passes as an emergency, seven-zero. Resolution eighty-nine, two thousand and fifteen?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for federal congestion mitigation air quality program funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study to improve portions of Dara Road from Post Road to McTarian Parkway and declaring an emergency.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution eighty-nine, two thousand and fifteen as an emergency, is there a second?
I'll second. Are you?
Mrs. Stoffer seconds. Discussion.
This is the, I guess, looking for, seeking money to, for the proposed, for a proposed sidewalk between McTarian and Post. I know it's been a topic of discussion, and we've had presentations from, from high school students on this, so hopefully this is something we can continue to seek and move forward with.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just, this is what I was talking about earlier that we brought forward from the safety committee, and we're looking for the grant money to get this project going.
Thank you. Anybody else? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Mr. McDermott?
Well, yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-nine, two thousand and fifteen passes as an emergency, seven-zero. Ordinance ninety, two thousand and fifteen?
An ordinance repealing ordinance one twenty-nine, two thousand and fourteen, and retaining wards and boundaries as previously set forth in section one zero five point zero one of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg and declaring an emergency.
I move that we place ordinance ninety, two thousand and fifteen on its third, third and final reading and declare it an emergency, is there a second?
I'll second. Are you?
Mr. Scafidi seconds. That was unfair, you were both doing it. All right. Okay. Discussion on the emergency. The reason we wanted an emergency on this is that when we did the redistricting, we, as in the past, just put, moved streets around. And the, and the, and the Board of Elections is saying that the new way to do it through the census is to split it down the middle of the road. And we couldn't get something worked out now, so we decided to have the, the board that made this recommendation meet again in the summer, come up with a new recommendation following the guidelines that the Board of Elections has asked us to do, as to not confuse precinct boundaries because it affects how we would vote on zoning. So, the emergency is so that we can verify that, that we'll maintain our current wards and bound, ward boundaries for the upcoming election. Is there any other comment? Shannon, would you call the roll for the emergency?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
I may, I move that we adopt as an emergency ordinance ninety, two thousand and fifteen. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ceraci seconds. Discussion. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance ninety, two thousand and fifteen passes as an emergency, seven-zero. Resolution ninety-one, two thousand and fifteen?
A resolution to approve the Haddon Road Improvements Project A, including, including the proposed division of funding, therefore, as favorable, favorably recommended by the Twinsburg Township, Village of Reminderville, Jedd Board, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I move we adopt resolution ninety-one, two thousand and fifteen as an emergency. May I have a second with anybody that doesn't have an S that starts their name?
I'll second.
Mr. Gates? Mr. Yates has seconded this. Discussion, please. Okay. So this is a, a, this is asking for funding in conjunction with the township and Reminderville for our portion of Haddon Road for, for a future road project. Any other comments? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution ninety-one, two thousand and fifteen passes seven-zero as an emergency. Unfinished business, new business, and miscellaneous. Mrs. Stoffer?
Just, I have just a couple of things. Mr. Banachi mentioned something about the Bachi courts, and, and I've had other residents ask about that. I'm not sure who's on the parks board, is it you, Mr. Yates?
I have the parks board right now.
You're on parks board, my goodness, I'm wondering if you could bring that to the board and talk to them about that, that's something I have heard.
We had Bachi courts for quite a few years. They were up behind the senior center.
And they just, not a lot of activity, huh?
Yeah. I, I don't think they're up there anymore.
There's qualities of Bachi, we've got to get the clay courts to be like the high-end.
Oh, is that it?
Chuck, you're going to Palmer for clay, right?
Gotcha.
But he's not the first resident who's brought that up to me.
Got him a little Italy.
Okay.
Chuck, Chuck will roll those, those courts every morning.
I'll play.
I was going to say, it might be a nice, nice addition to our community. And another thing, Daisy, she's not here, had left and mentioned, I, I'm, I would like to encourage.
Is in the second row?
Oh, I thought you were not.
You can't see her through the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry. I want to thank you for, again, for everything you've done, all the help and everything you've done. And the last is that Ward four, the concerns that were mentioned earlier, I just would like to encourage any resident to please contact me with any questions or concerns. I'd be more than happy to help, and especially concerning this rezoning, I think it's important that our residents have as much information as possi, as possible before making a decision on these types of rezoning issues. So please, contact me if you have questions or concerns. That is all I have.
Okay. Mr. Ceraci?
Yes, thank you. First, I just wanted to mention again, if anyone is interested in volunteering for the cost of freedom, Shannon's still looking for help, and they're still asking, you can go online and volunteer if you choose. Also, I, I worked at the Taste of Twinsburg and served on the committee all year to set it up and plan it, and spent my whole day there Saturday. It was a great success, and it, it, it's already set for next year, the third Saturday in June, two thousand and sixteen. I also wanted to mention that Mr. Fury and myself had the pleasure of, of going this week and speaking to a group of adults in the Constant Companions Program. It's a Hattie, Hattie Larland program. May not be aware that it's even in our area, but we had a, a group of senior, or adults there who had some questions, and we did a presentation on how the city is run and how, how you get things done, and how council works, and the mayor, and so forth. And we had a pretty nice time there, and we had a nice presentation, very good questions by the residents there. And this program brings these adults in during the day, and they teach them how to care for pets and how to do different kind of tasks, like washing clothes or cooking, minor cooking, and just different things like that. So it was a very interesting experience for us, and a very successful day. And I wanted to just remind you of the community forum that we're having Thursday night, June twenty-fifth, that's this Thursday, it'll start about eight o'clock and go till eight-thirty PM. Anyone is invited to attend if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roden?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. There is a, a golf scramble this weekend, shotgun at one o'clock for the Twinsburg hockey team. If you're interested in playing golf and supporting the Twinsburg hockey team, call Diane Zekowski at two one six, three one six, seven one zero nine, or you can contact the golf course and ask Brian Maynard. And that's all I have this evening. Mr. McDermott?
I have nothing else.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I, I received a phone call from a resident regarding walk-around solicitors in our, in our neighborhoods with some concerns. So, if there's any other residents that have had issues with some of the vendors that we're permitting to walk around our neighborhoods, please contact me, because this particular vendor, I guess, was on the edge of being hostile, and then as the resident watched him, he walked down and actually almost like cased the garage, and so just had a lot of concerns about these people walking around in our neighborhoods with, you know, young families and kids and stuff. So if there's any other residents that have had issues, could you please contact me so that, I guess, I can look further into who these vendors are and how we're actually, what kind of permitting process we have to allow people to wander, wander our neighborhoods. Next, I know the, the mayor got a, a letter from Mr. Voitsch regarding the work that the service department did. I, I met with him, and, and I really like to just commend the service department. Mr. Voitsch had a water main break in front of his house. He had problems. He contacted Division of Water, which is not very easy to deal with, got nowhere. Finally, the city got involved, got him out there. Division of Water was going to walk away from the problem, the city made them actually dig it up, and then at that point, they found, I think after the city had already scoped it, it was a crushed pipe based on the work they did to fix the water main. So, not only did he have that issue, but because of this crushed pipe, he also had a couple of thousand dollars worth of damage in his basement that he talked to me about, that hopefully we can try to help him do something with. But the city did a great job, and, and in his opinion was, they were not going to let him leave unless they were going to start digging and, and making sure that that pipe was replaced. So, anyway, I'm glad he sent a letter, and I'm glad that our service department, you know, was adamant in helping get that done. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Scafidi?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Mayor Prokop?
Well, I would just like to follow up on what Ted said, he made a very good suggestion here. Any solicitors in the city of Twinsburg need to have a permit, so make sure when they come to the door, you can even ask them if they have their permit on them. Certainly if they don't, let us know, and even if they do and they're a problem, please call either Ted or our PD or something, because they do go, we do a background check and they have to get permits, so.
Is that administered through the building department in the past?
Uh, through the police department.
Police department now? Thank you.
Okay. And other than that, I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
Mr. Maestros?
Nothing. Thank you.
Shannon, why don't you tell us about the cost of freedom?
All right. Well, bear with me because there's a lot going on. So, Mr. Ceraci briefly mentioned about still needing volunteers. There was over seven hundred spots, we've got about half of those filled, so we still need a lot more. In addition to the actual volunteers during the event, we need help with setup. We're actually starting tomorrow through this Friday at the high school parking lot, nine AM to three PM. And again, next Monday, the twenty-ninth, through the first, from nine to three PM. And then the event actually opens to the public on Thursday at noon, and then from then on, it'll be open twenty-four hours until Sunday at three PM. So lots of volunteers, and even after three PM, we need help breaking down, so if you're able to help with that. Lot of things going on, a lot of people think it's just the Vietnam Wall that's coming, but it's so much more than that. There's exhibits honoring veterans from every branch of the service, every war conflict that the United States has fought in, honoring police fire, a nine-eleven memorial. It just, the list goes on and on. We have indoor exhibits, outdoor exhibits, the Twinsburg high school student, or actually Twinsburg School District students have been working on art exhibits all, all year long. They won't even let us know what they look like, so there's going to be a whole art exhibit with a patriotic theme that'll be inside. We also have the Eyes of Freedom, which will be inside, which Matt's here, Matt, Solara, and Emma Jean Pools actually sponsored that event, or that exhibit for us, so thank you, Matt. Let's see. We also have, in conjunction with the City's Rock the Park, there's the Cleveland Pops Orchestra, and a lot of people don't know that there is actually a complimentary veterans ticket available for that. If you're, are a veteran or know a veteran, those tickets can be reserved by contacting the VFW. Their number's three three zero, four two five, seven one six two. To actually start the event off, Wednesday, the first, there is an honor guard escort that is basically a motorcycle escort from the city of Streetsboro, with staging in the Big D's parking lot, which is the old Walmart, if you're not familiar with it. Staging starts at two PM with kickstands up at three PM sharp. The route will be four eighty to Twinsburg, getting off at ninety-one to Ravenna Road. So there could possibly be some delays through the center of town between three, and we're hoping to have everyone through by four PM, so if residents can just be aware of that. I think?
I think there's going to be a motorcycle escort with that?
Yes. Yeah, that's the escort that'll take place.